Good afternoon. The meeting of the zoning board of appeals for March 28, 2018 will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Bacilli. Yes, Mr. D'Angelo. Yes, Mr. Lopes. Yes, Mr. Mazzoni. Yes, Mr. Tucker.
President.
Yes, and Mr. Pelton, who's the alternate member?
Now, we will be taking items out of line with the calendar. The first item that we will have on the calendar tonight is 1814 Char Development, 320 Revere Beach Boulevard. There is a request for a continuance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Lawrence Simeone. I represent a Char Development. John Henry's going to tell me I need to have my phone off. At this point, unfortunately, I've tried to monitor this process very quickly. I cannot get my civil engineer here. He's a critical member of the development team, especially we're going to deal with soil and topography issues. So respectfully, because he's had a family emergency, I'm asking the matter be continued to April 25. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any proponents, anyone in favor?
Mr. Chairman, in your packets this evening, you will note that you have received six letters with respect to this project, one opposed, and five in favor of the development.
And they will be recorded.
We just don't have addresses.
Okay, we'll have to provide addresses for them, please. And is there any other proponents? Hearing not all calls outside of the hearing. The ward councilor wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Are you opponent or proponent? Just so we'll start the hearing.
Opponent. Okay. I was here a couple of months ago, and this board voted five to nothing to deny this project. Now, I don't see any significant change in the project at all, and I can't imagine why this gentleman is here. You have, there's shot, from my understanding, 62 parking spaces, is that correct? And then part of the other spaces are tandem parking, which had been denied in the past by site plan redo?
That's correct on the plans, yes.
Okay. We have a ball field, Sullivan Field, right next to that project. And occasionally-
Could I just interrupt you? Could anyone with electronic devices, please silence the devices or take it out into the hallway? Thank you. Can I be the first one?
That park is maintained by the DCR. And kids do go down there with their families, and they play ball. I think to allow this project would really cause a problem with the parking down there. In addition to that, 120-plus years ago, Charles Elliott designed this beach as a public beach, the first public beach in America, actually. And that means that anybody should be able to go down there, park their car, and use the beach. Not only people from out of town, but people that might live in Ward 6, and Ward 4, and other sections of the city. They want to go down there for a couple of hours, put their beach chair in their car, and enjoy the beach. When a project is approved minus by ordinance 62 parking spaces, I can't imagine that happening. We have a building next door, the St. George. The residents in that building collectively have invested over, well over $100 million. All this is going to do is impact that building. Not only that building, but buildings further down. Now, I went door-to-door a year ago campaigning, and I got the message loud and clear from the residents down there. They don't want any more apartments. Build what you can do is a matter of right. Stop all of these variances. It's insane what's going on. In 2004, our former mayor, George Colula, had that beach designated as a national historic landmark. I look at it today when I see the traffic coming up Ocean Ave, when I see the traffic coming from the Point of Pines, when I see the traffic coming from the southern end of the boulevard, all squeezing into that little area. It has become a national historic nightmare. When I look at, now, the Cove Site, they had originally proposed 70-some-odd units. They were denied. They came back, and they're going to do what they can as a matter of right. Okay? It's time that we all stand up for the people that live in this city, the people that pay taxes, the people that have made major investments down on that boulevard. If you can build X amount of spots down there, apartments with, or condos with a parking space that's required by zoning, go ahead and do it. But let's not, 62 parking spaces, and then on top of that tandem parking? That's the most insane thing I've ever heard of in this city. So I would ask this board, when this comes up for a vote, to take the same vote you took three months ago. Say no, enough is enough. The residents in this city don't want it. Thank you.
All right. Just so we're here, we're not here all night long, please keep the clapping until the end if you're going to be clapping, because there's just no need of it if this isn't the city council meeting. We're just trying to run a meeting here. If there's opposition, please step up to the microphone. The next person opposed, state your name and address for the record. There's a two-minute time.
Yes, I'll be brief. Rosely Vincent, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. I'm a fourth generation and a lifelong resident of Revere, and I'm an abutter to the proposed project. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns. I've stated previously to this honorable board that I'm not opposed to responsible development. But even with the latest modifications, it's a 145 rental unit project. It still requires front, back, two sides, parking variances, which again is tandem parking, which I find really unacceptable. You know, I can understand when a project comes before you with requiring a variance or two, but not five. I think it's irresponsible development. I'm not sure if anyone else thinks it's responsible development, but I certainly don't. And not to echo Councilor Powers, but this proposed development is located in the most congested intersection of the boulevard. It's the intersection where Ocean Ave, Revere Beach Boulevard, and Revere Street all merge into one lane, and this proposed development is right smack on that corner. I can't even imagine people trying to get in and out of that development. And I referred previously to the Atlantica as a comparable unit, which has 81 units. We're talking 81 versus 145. So, you know, we have zoning regulations in place for a reason. We also have an obligation and a duty to demand responsible development, and I don't believe this one is. I want to just say that I totally agree with Councilor Powers when you said, when he said, "Let them build what they can by right." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opposition? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Albert Fine, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, Unit 6-5L. I am an original owner in the St. George, so I've been here about 30 years. And I've seen a lot, much of which has been very pleasant. I commend the city for its maintenance of the beach, or whomever is responsible for that, and the improvements to the boulevard. From an aesthetic point of view, it's made a huge difference. From a utilization point of view, it has made a very big difference. There's a lot more activity down there, a lot more visitors, and insufficient parking. I think the preservation of aesthetics is an important consideration, as well as utility. And I personally regret the fact that the St. George was allowed to put as many floors up as it did, and that the city recognized that that's not such a good idea. So I think that the proposal for this construction is totally unreasonable. I feel that you people have opted for certain confinements which should be adhered to, especially when they're as ridiculous as these are. Thank you.
My name is Glenn Manson-Hing, and I live at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard that abuts this new construction proposed. Unit 6-5J. What I would like to say first of all, thank you very much for having me here. And listen, I would like to echo John Powers, Rosely Vincent, and Dr. Fine. Everything they've said, they couldn't have said it more eloquently. I've lived here now for 25 years at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, and what I've been seeing over the last few years with the amount of construction that's going on, the construction, I think is extremely irresponsible. Not only to the residents of Revere and Revere Beach, but also to our community, and for the people that use our beach. There's nothing more than I can say, all I can say, it is irresponsible for this development to go through as is. I'm not against development. Build what is without any variances, build what is allowable under our current law that we all passed many years ago. But to allow this to go through is irresponsible. You can imagine what's going to happen to that corner, you can imagine what's going to happen to the beach, and what people are going to think about it. As it is right now, I know people would not come to the beach because of the traffic and what goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one would like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the committee. My name is Priscilla Nickerson, and I reside at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. I'm known in the city for helping volunteer. I helped volunteer to build a dog park, two children's parks. I invented the Santa Walk, and I also helped maintain funding for the new roof for the senior center. So I do a lot in the community, and the reason why I'm here is because I've done these things to make our city better. I am here today in opposition of this project. I am not opposed to development in this city. I, along with my husband and partners, have developed and rehabbed many properties in this city and elsewhere. Never did I overdevelop. We build by right with more than enough parking for our projects. With this project, we are going to have to put many extra cars on on-street parking. They are not allowed to park across the street after 10:00 p.m. They will be ticketed and towed. Are they going to inform their prospective tenants about this? Is it going to be written in their lease? There will be no visitor parking here, no business parking. Where are these cars going to park? At the St. George, when it snows, the cars are moved to visitor parking while maintaining snowplows and snowplows the assigned parking spaces. Where will they put these cars? Also, I think it is unfair and ludicrous that this development be allowed to put this building so close to the street. The St. George couldn't. Why should they be different? If this building is allowed a front variance, the residents at the St. George, who have lived there many, many years, even decades, will lose their southerly view. As a developer myself, I have never asked for any variances, no front, no rear, no side, not in this city or any other. I always believed that variances were granted for hardships. This is not a hardship. This is just to get more units in this area. I would rather the developer build by right, then they will have to go up and build with steel and cement, but that costs more. I did it. Doing this will make the building safer, especially from a fire. This project of this magnitude without the proper parking will not only cause more traffic while residents looking for on-street parking spaces, it will cause first responders to be trapped in that area because of the added traffic. What about beachgoers?
Okay, two minutes, so wrap it up, please.
All right. What about beachgoers? Many people visit our beach in the summer months to go to the restaurants, sandcastles, kite festivals. Where are they going to park? The added burden of 62-plus cars on the beach is unconscionable. Lastly, and most importantly, the ward councilor, John Powers, is opposed to this project because he spoke to the nearby residents, he walked the streets of the area. The Revere residents don't want apartments or overdevelopment. When you build homes and condos, you build roots. Once again, I am opposed to this development. It brings in tax revenue, yes, but I am opposed to overdevelopment for profit. The bottom line, we live here.
Thank you. Just please try to stay to the two minutes. I don't want to have to shut the microphone off. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Good afternoon, members of the city council. Deborah Haybichnek, I am an owner of two units at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, units 5F and 5G. Everyone here has spoken wonderfully. I'm just here to speak specifically to what Mr. Simeone said at the Board of Zoning Bill's reapplication meeting. Those of us that were present heard that there were going to be multiple changes that would meet the substantial material change that would allow for reapplication. However, soil has been brought up, it's not the first time, and the engineer's not here to discuss soil conditions. So you may grant a variance, and you do have the authority to do this under our general laws, 40A, but there are certain restrictions given to that. And you have the right under Norcross v. Board of Appeals of bottom to grant that, but it's supposed to be only in rare instances. And this soil issue, it can be one of three issues that would allow you to grant this variance, whether it would be a soil condition, or it can be the shape of the land, and that's a nice rectangular piece of land, or something about the topography. But you can't find, or you cannot grant a variance unless you find either the soil, the topography, or the shape. And here, I think we're going to be hearing about soil now as the reason why you should grant this. And there's one issue, though, that might look at why you should not grant a variance if soil becomes the one hardship for Mr. Simeone and his project. And that would be if a condition exists that is near the abutting property. And there have been examples where, there have been soil conditions, the putting, putting your peat deposits and poor drainage that have allowed it. But if there is a condition, such as a swampy condition, that extends to the abutting property, you cannot support that. The wetlands exist behind our entire piece of property. We have water filling in there, and it's not coming from the tide. When the tide comes in, it's come in since the Atlantica was built. So I am hoping that you will take a very good look at the materials that will be presented to you on April 25, to see if they meet the criteria, and whether our wetlands prevent you from deciding this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other opponents? Once again, this will be heard on April 25 at 4 o'clock.
My name is Walter Bennett. I live at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. My unit number is P213H. Just a few words, everyone else seems to be very concerned about the parking and the traffic. I won't waste your time by also talking about that. My point is, it would, I think, it would be ludicrous for you to approve basically the same proposal you rejected the last time they were here. Their tiny token changes, minor and minimal tweaking, is absurd. The number of units is the same, the height is the same, the number of parking spaces is the same. You still need back and side and front zoning variances. One nice thing they did, and I approve it, they put their building back seven feet, not quite enough, but it's something. And we thought they were going to come back in with some, substantial, I know is not the word, they have to meet, whatever the real word is, it's something less than substantial, but they don't meet that to come back before the ZBA. It's basically the same proposal. And the only other minor change, they also need a variance for the FAR. They were slightly over three, they're 3.1. Now they're slightly under, they're 2.97, something like that. It seems silly to me to come back and waste all of our time when they've come back with the same proposal. I say, let them come back with some substantial, important changes, and then we can consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one would like to speak in opposition? Hearing not all calls that side of the hearing. Is there a motion to continue? Motion to continue.
To April 25. Question comes on the vote to continue this matter to April 25. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Lopes? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. It is continued to April 25 at 4:00 p.m.
We'll take a five-minute reset.
Next application before the board is application A1802. This is the application of Gate Residential Properties LLC, 265 Franklin Street, Boston, requesting minimum rear side and front yard setback variances to enable the appellant to construct a 73-unit multifamily residential development at 20-50 Ocean Avenue Revere. The appellant has sent a communication to the ZBA requesting to withdraw this application without prejudice.
Do you wish to speak, or to withdraw?
Happy to speak. Good afternoon. My name is Damian Zari, Chairman Tucker, members of the board. I'm requesting the ability to withdraw the application for both projects, 21 Revere Beach Boulevard and 20-50 Ocean. After our submission, we realized we had a technical issue in the application, so we plan on refiling next week and coming back on the April 25.
Okay, and refiling, you're going to go through the whole process, advertising-
Renotising, advertising, everything.
Is there a motion to withdraw? Roll call.
Question now comes on granting leave to withdraw without prejudice, first on 1802, without prejudice. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Lopes? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. It is granted, withdraw without prejudice. The next application is application A1803, again by Gate Residential Properties LLC, variances for an apartment and restaurant use within the RC2 district to enable the appellant to construct 127-unit mixed-use development at 21 Revere Beach Boulevard. The applicant has sent the communication to the ZBA requesting leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Roll call.
Motion to withdraw by Nick. This is to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Lopes? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. Granted leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We will take up calendar on the 1813. That was an email sent.
The next item before the board is application A1813. This is a special permit application of Virgilu Pavlu, 102 Kimball Ave, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to further alter and expand a non-conforming two-family structure by constructing a 9-foot 2-inch by 10-foot two-story addition and a 6-foot by 6-foot bulkhead at 102 Kimball Ave, Revere.
Good afternoon. Attorney Laurence Catino here with the owner, Virgil Pavlu. As mentioned, we are requesting a special permit to erect a vertical addition on a pre-existing non-conforming use. We are not seeking to add any more units. As a matter of fact, this proposal actually gets rid of a bedroom and just allows for more living space within the unit that my client does occupy. I've included in the packet some pictures, so you can see the small portion that's already being filled in. And with me today, I also have a letter from the direct neighbor who abuts the side yard of where the vertical addition would be in support of the application. And I can answer any questions.
So we're going to open the public hearing. I believe the ward councilor would like to speak, so if we let the ward councilor speak. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Irenov Velzelsky, 53D Home Street, Ward 2 Counselor. I have reviewed the plans on this, and there's nothing serious to worry about, and I'm in favor for a tech. Be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing not all calls that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing not all calls that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? If we can have a roll call.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested and the issuance of a special permit. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Lopes? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Special permit is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was one more. What other item was that? Do you have another calendar item number? I think Loomis? Is Loomis? Nope. Okay, if we can go and audit it.
The next item before the board is application A1804. This is the application of 64 VWS Owner LLC, 7121 Fairway Drive, Suite 410, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, requesting a parking variance to remove 35 parking spaces at an existing 194-unit apartment building at 660 Ocean Ave, Revere, to enable the appellant to improve the building facade, install new amenities and leasing space, and relocation of loading and moving truck areas to the rear of the building.
Good afternoon, board members. My name's Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown, LLP, 14 Proctor Ave and Revere. I represent the applicant on this petition. It's a petition for some really major improvements to the look and function of this building on Ocean Ave. The facade of the building is going to have an updated entrance, just a new look to it. Right now, it's a little hard to tell exactly where the opening of the building is. And more significantly, the garage ramp that goes up to the second floor parking, that's going to be completely screened in now, as I think you'll be able to see on the renderings that were just passed out. One of the really critical things noticed by this new owner of the building is that all the loading and unloading for tenants coming and going from the building, their moving trucks, was all done on Ocean Ave. Somehow, when the building was designed, they didn't make a functional loading space. And so this proposal is to remove loading and unloading off of Ocean Ave, get it out of- of the public streets, and move it to the rear of the building. And finally, there will be some interior renovations to make this loading and unloading space, and also some new tenant amenities. In order to do this, they would need to take out some of the parking spaces. They're completing a full parking audit, identifying who's parking there, who has units in the building, what cars go with what spaces, and are really instituting some significant new changes to their parking regulation. One of the critical things in meeting with the Ward Counselor was saying that these parking spaces need to be tied directly to the leases of the units, not as a separate charge, charged to somebody having a car. And that's something they're fully in support of, and are going to make a part of this proposal. The final piece that was unbeknownst to the applicant in discussions with the mayor's office and with the city development and planning department, moving the access to the rear of the building actually has a significant advantage for the MBTA as well as the city to access the eastern county ditch. Right now, they can't currently get back to those areas, and by making these changes and removing these few spots, they are now actually going to be able to get trucks back there and do work back there. Again, something my client's happy to support. And they're happy to answer any questions you might have and think this is a good proposal to make a new and functioning building that has had some issues in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee. Irono Veselsky, 53 De Hone Street, Ward Two Counselor. I have reviewed the plans and the proposals on this, and I was very insistent upon them not allowing to pay for parking separately. I think it's a very bad situation down in Ocean Ave. Not only the parking and causing other issues, but all the flooding that's going on down there, those cars were getting flooded, overwhelmed. But I'm glad to hear also, when I was speaking to the attorney, is that it's not only 660 Ocean Ave, it's 674 also. It's a package deal for the whole Vanguard project. And I think it's very important, the former contractors did not follow the plans. They're the ones that caused a lot of these parking spaces to be voided, because they put poles where parking spaces should have been, support columns. So between the architecture and the contractor, very poorly done, and this new company that's coming in is trying to correct everything. And hopefully, it'll look a lot better when they're through with that. So with these changes, I'm in favor of them. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Any members who speak? I do have a couple of questions, or just clarification. This is the building that was purchased by a new developer and management company? Correct. Now, are they handling the structural issues that the building department has brought to their attention?
Sorry about that. Yes, this is a new building owner and management company. They came in, I think, late last year, taking over this building. This is something that was newly discovered as well. There's a number of structural issues with the property that they're currently investing significant money to get addressed. I think more than they were hoping for.
And they will address the flaws in the plan as well?
Yes, yes. And that's part of this proposal as well, is really providing a concrete starting point on where the parking sits, because like the Ward Counselor was saying, certain parking spaces weren't even there in the first place. So this is really just making a good starting point for a better future for this building.
And they are willing to put in writing that they will not have any moving trucks out in the front block and the sidewalk?
Yes, this is good for them as it is for the city. They'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Can we add that to the restriction? We'll make it part of it. We'll add that parking has to be included in the lease, and that access to the county ditch. And that all vendors and moving would take place in the rear of the property in the new That was the important ones from the building.
The conditions that are being proposed as a part of this variance, that parking spaces be included as part of the lease agreements for the units, that the applicant maintain access to the county ditch, and that the vendors, any vendors, moving trucks, et cetera, access the rear of the property.
That'd be fine.
And those are per you as well? Okay. Are there any opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Once again, and members, roll call.
Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant, subject to the conditions presented. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This variance is granted, subject to conditions.
And number seven, if we don't mind. Calendar number seven.
Taking out of order, application A1807. This is the application of Faith Usik, 13 Satoris Court, Haverhill, Mass., requesting minimum side yard setback and maximum building coverage variances to enable the appellant to construct a 16-foot-by-24-foot addition and an eight-foot-by-38-foot porch in the rear yard of an existing single-family dwelling at 24 Hillside Ave. in Revere.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. My name's Faith Usik. I applaud you for saying my last name correctly. I'm here for variance because they said I needed 10 feet on the side of my house, and the plot plan said that I only had eight. It's a little bit more on the front, so it's actually less than two feet that I would need. And my house is like up on a hill, and the next plot plan is below, and it's an empty lot right now. So I was just, you know, want to make my house comfortable so I can eventually get it fixed up and move in there, because right now, you know, I just own the house, and I can't even live there because I need to fix it for myself.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Irono Veselsky, members of the Committee, 53 De Hone Street, Revere, Ward Two Counselor. I have reviewed the plans on this, and the young lady that was a trustee of the property and the, with three other trustees altogether, and two of them passed away. So she ended up with the building, and she wants to move back to Revere, be able to live in a nice house. It's a single-family house now. Excuse me, she's not planning on making a two-family. It's on a side street, it's up on a hill, it's very difficult. She's taken a chance on doing what she's doing, so I saw them. I have no issues with the way the construction is going to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members who speak? Nope. Roll call, please.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted.
Go on to.
There's a lot of people here for the number 11. I believe we have to make an announcement on that one, right?
This is application A1811. This is the application of RBP Hotel LLC, 1359 Hooksett Road, Hooksett, New Hampshire, requesting minimum front yard setback and minimum off-street parking variances to expand the number of permitted hotel rooms from 132 hotel rooms to 160 hotel rooms at 245 Revere Beach Parkway, Revere. This matter has come to the ZBA upon application of the developer. Upon review of the application, it was determined that the applicant must first make a submission to the Revere City Council relative to the number of units in parking, and that the applicant may very well be coming back before the Zoning Board of Appeals on the front yard variance only. So the matter is before the board. Hearing can be conducted, and it's probably going to be tabled to allow the applicant to return to the city council.
With that being said, is the applicant in the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank Stringey, Chairman of Site Planner Review Committee. I'm just here for clarification purposes. The clerk of the ZBA and myself spoke earlier, and since this project is initially part of a planned unit development, as the clerk indicated, they have to go back to the city council to get the city council approval on the changes. However, the proposed addition is creating new non-conformities. That's why we sent them to the ZBA for front yard variances and parking. And just a formality, going back to the city council, to have the city council approve the submission of the new plans, and those plans to get recorded.
Okay, thank you. So is the applicant here? So you fully understand what they were just saying?
Yes.
All righty. Do you have anything to add to this, or?
Yes, I thought I'd just make a couple of clarification remarks.
Could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Christine Thomas, and 100 Commandant's Way in Chelsea, Massachusetts. And I am a partner in RBP Hotel LLC. That's the owner of the land and the project. My partners and I are a fully-integrated, award-winning hotel development operating management company and owning company of lodging with a strong local presence in Chelsea, Medford, Cambridge, Boston, and many other communities in the Commonwealth. We have offices located at 227 Marginal Street in Chelsea. And the reason that I mention this is because RBP Hotel LLC is currently permitted to develop 134-room extended stay hotel as part of the PUD redevelopment of the former Shaw site located at 205 Revere Beach Parkway. The hotel parcel has since been subdivided with an address designated as 245 Revere Beach Parkway. And I tell you about us because we partner with Marriott Intercontinental Hotels Group in Hilton in a way that we're involved in the development of their emerging prototypes and concepts for these leading worldwide franchiser. So in this trailblazing role, we're actively engaged in the rollout of dual-branded hotels. And by this, I mean it's the way of the future for the lodging industry with two different hotel brands with different features that share the same public space. And in collaboration with Intercontinental Hotels Group, we've recently been authorized to proceed with a prototype of this type of concept here in Revere. To accomplish this, that we're proposing to reduce the permitted 134-room hotel, which is an extended stay hotel, to 80 rooms, and construct a second 80-room hotel for guests not requiring a brand with expanded space and kitchen amenities. This will create a dual-branded campus of 160 rooms in total. This provides the minimum room count per hotel acceptable to the franchiser for this two-branded hotel concept. So the ground floor of the project will remain exactly the same, and the upper floors will be extended westward by only 21 feet 8 inches over open parking. In order to implement this dynamic change to a two-hotel campus, which substantially improves the long-term viability of the project, we're seeking a further reduction in the parking ratio approved for the first hotel as part of the PUD from .5 to .438, and to reduce the front yard setback from 20 feet to 12 feet 4 inches, also approved for the first hotel as a part of the PUD. Although improved parking circulation allowed us to increase our parking count by four spaces, the irregular, narrow triangular shape of the site created by Sales Creek and the DEP requirements for permitting pertaining to the setbacks from the creek that don't generally affect the rest of the zoning district restrict our opportunity to create additional parking, and therefore zoning relief is required. As operators of transit-oriented hotels regionally, we would not seek parking relief that would adversely affect our customers or our business. Two examples of our operating transit hotels routinely running occupancies greater than 90% are the Town Place Suites in Chelsea with a parking ratio of .46, and it is serviced by Airport Van Transit. And our Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott in Cambridge, the parking ratio there is .45, and they are at the same distance to the Leechmere T-stop as this project will be to the Beauchamp T-stop. Both hotels have adequate parking. This proposed two-hotel concept would have both airport van transit and MBTA proximity that provides us with the confidence in adequate parking being available to our guests. The same limitations of the site created by Sales Creek and the DEP requirements for permitting necessitate front setback relief to 12 feet 4 inches. The 12 feet 4-inch setback is also necessary to be consistent and visually appropriate with the balance of the PUD and to work seamlessly with the planned pedestrian walkway that runs along Revere Beach Parkway. This two-hotel concept will maintain all of the benefits to the public good associated with the originally approved first hotel project, such as drainage, open space, safer access to the site, and building the commercial base. Additionally, the second hotel will generate more than $100,000 to the Community Investment Trust Fund, increase the real estate and rooms and meals tax income to the city, and provide additional fencing desired by the residential neighborhood immediately, it's real fast, residential neighborhood immediately to the north of the site in order to secure a wooded, long-used-for-illegal-dumping area without adversely affecting the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinances, as it represents only a minor modification consistent with the intent of the PUD. Thank you for your time.
Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, once again. Irono Veselsky, 53 De Hone Street, Ward Two Counselor. I've been in contact with the city planner and the economic development people, and we actually sat down and looked at the plans. And, you know, once the notices went out for this hearing, I got one phone call, a neighbor from across the street, a couple doors down from the Sunoco station. And they called me and say, you know, we'd like to know what's going on. I told them, and they said, well, we'd like to get something, you know, to protect our neighborhood, you know. So I said, what do you want? You know, what can we work with them? And they said, well, we really don't want to look at the creek across the street from their houses or behind the new building. So we worked out a program that they will install So we worked out a program that they will install a new fence all the way from the end of, from the Revere Beach Parkway around to Elliott Road to block it. And we're working with the Superintendent of Public Works to install the gates there so we can clean out the trash racks across from the Sunoco Station. As was stated, it would bring in an extra $120,000 for my ward for mitigation funds to bring in and fix other things in the ward that are needed. And the few parking spaces that, you know, they may lose, I don't think it's significant. And I think it'll work. You know, it's something different, it's a new concept, and, you know, having 80 and 80 rather than 134 or 35, whatever it is, is not significant. I don't believe that it's going to cause any more traffic that people have been screaming about, because most of the traffic that comes through there is traffic coming through Revere, not for people living in Revere. So I think it's a good thing, I think it'll work, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing done, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, press the red button, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joeyanne Travato. I live at 1759 North Shore Road. I am the homeowner, taxpayer, voter, school, volunteer, and I feel like I'm wasting my breath and my time addressing this because it seems that whenever that project wants something, it gets it. Yes, it may be a minimal 24 more units, but I'm a little bit troubled by long-term stay and apartments that have kitchens. We are creating a community of transients, and you are going to drive out.
Just for the clarification, they're reducing the number of the long-term stays. So they're reducing the number of so-called kitchens. That's a benefit as far as I'm concerned.
But increasing--
The number of just hotel units.
Just plain hotel rooms.
Yes, that's what I heard. And she's shaking her head in the back, so that is clear.
Okay, well, I misunderstood because my head started--
At first, I was misunderstanding it too.
My head started spinning with the .48s and the .34s and the frontage and--
But I wanted to make that clear because that's definitely a benefit to the community.
I was one of many people who attended many of the meetings held at the police station who opposed the entire project. It frightens me, although the fire station said it's perfectly fine, it frightened me to see that entirely wood structure go up. And if you think there's not going to be an impact on traffic, come stay at my house for some evening in the summer or anytime. People in Revere don't use that way. Who goes to Target? Who goes to Stop &amp; Shop? People from East Boston come through. It's a pass-through community. North Shore Road is one lane in each direction. It's already a quagmire when it comes to traffic, noise, trash. What about all the trucks and other suppliers for the facility? Is there going to be restaurants there or something? Or just hotel? Trash removal. You just cannot imagine how much more impacted the neighborhood, what used to be a neighborhood, is going to be by any more development. This city is going to implode. We already have a population density problem, fourth in Massachusetts, the fourth most densely populated city in Massachusetts. This is something to think about. I'm all in favor of progress, I'm all in favor of development, but not at the expense of the citizenry of the city who have a pride in the city. Again, the hotel stayers, the apartment dwellers, the millennials who are going to come and go are not going to have any pride in this city. It's just going to be a stockover place, and that saddens me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Hearing done, I'll close that side of the hearing. There is a motion to continue until April 25th. Question comes on continuing this matter till the meeting of April 25th. Mr. Bichilli? Yes? Mr. D'Angelo? Yes? Mr. Lopes? Yes? Mr. Mazzoni? Yes? Mr. Tucker?
For continuance, yes.
Yes, this matter is continued till April 25th at 4:00 p.m. Back to the regular order of business. A 1805, this is the application of BJM Realty Investment LLC. 193 Crescent Avenue Revere requesting maximum height and maximum number of building stories variances to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling at 46 Loma Street Revere and a two-family dwelling at 54 Loma Street Revere. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board members. My name's Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown, LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere. This is a very, should be a very straightforward petition. My clients were in front of you approximately a year ago to have these lots approved for building lots, and that was passed in the planning process from there and talking with the building department and the conservation commission. Given where they're situated, it looks like it'd be best to raise the building slightly up so that they're out of the floodplain, and that's what's brought this petition today to bring up the height to what is average in the RB District, 35 feet, and to create it to be three stories versus two and a half stories, which permitted by the ordinance. It's kind of a trade-off at this point of they could do a flat-roofed building that would look out of place, I think, in this residential neighborhood, or they could put in something that looks traditional and harmonious with its neighbors. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you had.
Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing done, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing done, I'll close that side of the hearing. I just have one question. You said this is mandated because of the FEMA map now changed. Am I correct?
Correct.
So it's no alternative. They have to raise the home higher because of the new FEMA map.
Yes, and they did look at a design that they could raise the home higher and give it a flat roof, but it would really look out of place, I think, for the neighbors.
No, it would look terrible.
Yeah, it would look terrible, so that's why they wanted to come before you.
Okay, and this was already seen by Site Plan Review?
Correct. They'll have to go back to--
They will have to go back to Site Plan Review?
Just because it's a two-part process, getting denied on zoning, then they have to go back just for building purposes, connection to sewers and things like that.
Okay. Are there-- Anyone wish to speak? Roll call. The question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bichilli? Yes? Mr. D'Angelo? Yes? Mr. Lopes? Yes? Mr. Mazzoni? Yes? Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Next matter before the board is the application of North Shore Condos LLC, 787 North Shore Road Revere, requesting minimum front, side, rear, parking, buffer zone for parking lot and dubster variances to enable the appellant to construct an 18-unit residential condominium at 1133 North Shore Road bounded by Beechland Avenue and Calumet Street. Good afternoon.
Thank you, board members. Again, Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the applicant requesting to construct this new building on North Shore Road. This is something that is really, I think, an exciting project to change for this area. The applicants are two local guys, Revere residents, lived here their whole lives, and currently, you may remember, they're doing a project on Shirley Ave for veterans that was before you, I think, about a year ago. This is a new project, and the handouts that were just given out show the current conditions of the site. This is between Calumet and Beechland Avenue, and there is the mass junk business flooding on North Shore and then an apartment complex adjacent to that, and they're really in pretty bad condition. And that's where my clients are proposing this redevelopment, looking to restore this to more harmonious use with the neighbors, get away from that commercial use, and they are proposing a new building of 18 condominium units in 20 parking spaces. So these are condos. These are things that people will be buying and owning, investing in the community. These are not apartments, not rentals, and these, every unit has a parking space, and they even have additional parking spaces for visitors. Even so, with the adequate parking, this is right near the Wonderland Station. They're expecting and will be marketing these units for sale to people that'll be commuting, taking the T or getting one of the buses on North Shore Road. My clients have been working with the ward councillor on this project, something that he wanted to be very clear that he was getting input from the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting back in November mailed out to the entire precinct and presented the project to the neighborhood. They were, you know, very much in support in comparison to what's currently there. The ward councillor did ask us to lower this building, bring it down from what we had originally proposed, proposed as a five-story building and 22 units, down to what you see before you today, a four-story, 18-unit building. I think this is just a much more reasonable building. He's happy to see that and to, you know, have the right kind of development come in at the right place. This is really a more fitted proposal than I think you would see from other developers, not necessarily Revere guys who are going to continue to live here and be a part of this community. I think they'd be going much bigger and looking for something commercial, potentially even, you know, that mass junk building could easily be a 7-Eleven with in-and-out traffic all day long. So this is a more fitting proposal and I think a great opportunity to redevelop this corner. Just to show you, this is the rendering. So pretty good-looking building as well. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How's everybody doing today? I'm Bill Raney with Century 21 Northeast, 16 Pleasant Street, right across the street. And to me, as a real estate agent, there's not enough of these projects in this town, and the price point from what I've been able to see, even though I'm not personally involved in the project, is excellent, and we fully support this project. Thank you.
I'm Beck. Irenov Selsky, 53 Dehome Street. I just want to be able to vouch for the construction company. They are doing, as was stated, the veterans housing, which I have proposed at the old synagogue in Shirley Ave, and the building's going up very nicely, foundations in, and they're looking that, you know, we'll be able to put in 30 veterans in that building, you know, by January. But this will be a similar-type building. It's in the condo rate, and I think it'll clean up that neighborhood. It'll be a nice-looking building. There's another apartment building around the corner from there by the T traffic lights going into the garage, and I just think it's a nicer thing to see there rather than the properties that are there now. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Could you press the button just to turn that on? There you go. You can lower the mic if you'd like.
All right. Okay, my name is--
You're a proponent?
Yeah, yeah. My name is Noel, last name Khachi. I'm the owner and my house with my husband for 48 Beechland Ave. We just know about this condo. We just bought the house on August, I believe, on December 28th. We just did the closing. We didn't know about the condo, and we are not agree about it because it's going to affect my kids. I have autism kids, and it's really close to it, and we didn't have notice.
Ma'am, this is, I asked for proponents, people in favor.
Oh, okay.
So I'll close that side of the hearing, and then when I ask for opponents, are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lou McCarkus. I have an office. Thank you, members of the board. I have an office at Ocean Gate Tower, 382 Ocean Avenue, Revere Beach. I would ask that, in this particular case, you look at the quality of the developer. Historically, when councillor Novoselsky came to me and asked if I had a developer in mind for the synagogue project, which is on Shirley Ave, I didn't have to look far but down the street to Arm Construction and then occasion Brothers. When this particular project came to me, we put the package together. I see Dawn is here, one of the director butters who's been very gracious with her time and also has gone along with this project. At the direction of councillor Powers, we had our community meeting, we had actually several meetings, Bob O'Brien and so forth, to mitigate the impact. And after that initial community meeting, I think we sent out about 450 letters. Three butters showed up. We had the meeting on-site, and from there, we went from, I think, four stories to three stories. We went from 24 units to 20. Now we're down to 18 under the councillor's direction. We mitigated to 18 units. So I would ask that you look at their track record, what they've done in the city. I think it's important to note that, you know, with the synagogue project, which is probably about a $5 million project happening here in the city, so much so that the governor came in with a $2 million Mass Works grant to help Shirley Ave, I just know that there are a lot of communities that would like to have Arm Construction doing projects in their city, and I would ask you for every consideration on their behalf. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing done, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Now, could you state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Okay, first name Noel, N-A-W-A-L, last name Khachi, K-H-A-C-H-A-I.
Thank you. And your address is?
48 Beechland Ave.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm the owner, me and my husband, for this house, and we just bought the house on December 28th. Did the closing. We didn't know about the condo or anything. We just received the letter, this is two weeks, just to come for the hearing, and we were surprised because we get this house, it was looking like for two years, and was looking for something safe for the kids because we have autism kids. And to be honest, this is, for me, it's not good for my kids. That's why I disagree.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Absolutely. My name's Alan Campbell. I own 4749 Calumet Street, which is in a butte to this project. I've lived in, I've lived on Calumet Street, owned a piece of property on Calumet Street for 62 years. First off, I'd like to commend the builders on their project and the synagogue project, but we're not talking about the synagogue project. We're talking about Beechland Ave and Calumet Street and direct result of this and the impact it's going to have on a residential neighborhood. I've been sitting here all afternoon, and I keep hearing about parking, parking, all these huge projects, more buildings, more apartments, more hotel rooms, less parking. Well, parking is going to affect this, there's already an overload on Calumet Street as far as, and Beechland Ave, as far as parking is concerned. And I have in front of me this, I don't know his name, the lawyer was talking about 20 parking spaces. When I look at this piece of paper, I count 19, and it doesn't look to me like it's feasible to get in and out of there. If you had a double cab truck, you're not going to ever get in and out of there. You know, they're very, very pretty pictures, but if you look at it the backside, it looks like a barn to me, a big barn with windows that's going to be right up against my house. They came before this board looking for seven variances. There were seven, there were seven things that were shot down by this board or by the zoning committee for non-compliance of rules that you have set in place to protect the neighborhood and the city. And one of them is the back, which is definitely going to affect me. Supposed to be 20 feet there. There's going to be no feet there. They want to put this building on every inch available. It's all about greed and mass profits. Everybody coming up here representing this project is being paid to do so. I've lived there 62 years. It's definitely, definitely, definitely going to affect the parking. Already, every time it rains in that neighborhood, we get flooded. We get flooded. I have a sump pump in my house. I live in Sagamore, 103 Sagamore Street. I rolled down a bunch of stuff, you know, I went right off track. You'll have to excuse me. You'll have to excuse me. Yeah, you know, they want to basically put 18 units there with 19 parking spaces. Most people that I know, they're Sukkot families. When I wanted to do a project on Calumet Street, when I bought, when I bought 4749 Calumet Street, I was told that I needed four parking spaces, that I had to pave my unpaved driveway before I could even buy the house. I did that. I did that. My house is in pristine condition. Granted, I'm not, I'm not against development, I'm for development, but follow the rules, follow the rules. Just, I don't know, I get up here and I get all nervous and stuff. If, if there's, if there's a fire, how are they going to fight the fire? If, if, if there's, if there's no setback on the sides or on North Shore Road or on Beechland Ave, what about snow overhanging and stuff like that? People getting in and out of this project or just going out of Calumet Street if it's right on North Shore Road? No trees, no nothing, like, this building would, would completely draw off my house. My tenant has two little, two little children. Are these windows going to line up with their windows? Are they going to be right next door to each other? Are these kids going to be looking into somebody else's window? Are people going to be looking into their windows? It's just, again, 100% any, you know, somebody mentioned FEMA a couple of minutes ago. As far as I know, the flood, the flood map goes right up to across the street on the other side of Calumet Street is, is a flood zone. This side isn't, but for how long? You know what I mean? There was something on Facebook the other day about this specific project, and people were talking about that. By 2030, where's it going to be? 10 years from now, 12 years from now? It's just, definitely, you know, I keep hearing that quote here, and I, I understand I only got two minutes, and I've gone over. Thank you. But everybody's talking about, you know, traffic and parking, like, drive down Revere Street at 5:00 at night, and it's the wintertime now. It's 100 times worse. This project positively, absolutely, negatively affects the neighborhood, and most of all me, and my tenants.
Any other opponents?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Daniel Rizzo, 35 Roland Road, Revere, Massachusetts. In the interest of full disclosure, I just found out 10 minutes ago who the developers were, and they are tremendous people. So obviously, this is not, I'm not here against them personally. But Mr. Campbell had approached me a couple of weeks ago to explain the situation. I think I've staked my position pretty clearly now for as long as I can remember, and that is, we need to take a breath. We are overbuilding this city at the expense of our own residents. As I look here at the board, some of you are residents, some of you have moved on, but you still are all tied to this community, and you know how people feel around this community right now. We've heard councilors here today talk about if you want to build, build by right. You know, anybody that comes before this board should have a legitimate hardship. This is almost a place where people come and say, "Well, you know, we don't have enough parking, we don't have enough frontage, we don't have enough side yard, we don't have enough setback." That's not why you should be granting a variance, in my opinion. I'm not sitting in that chair. I don't make that decision. But you people live here, you represent the interests not of the developers, you represent the interests of your neighbors, of our neighbors. You represent the interests of the city. How many more meetings are we going to sit and talk about traffic, parking? And then vote right, you know, yes, 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 yes. It should not be that way. It should not be that way. We have flooding. I'm still getting blamed, believe it or not. I'm getting blamed for McMackenfield flooding. Me, personally. As if somehow I built McMackenfield and I went out of my way to make it flood. Well, you know, what's happening is there is so much development going on, so much construction, so much, you know, displacement of soil for any type of floodwaters to, to, to travel to, that now it's inundating everywhere. When are we going to say enough? If it was up to me, I'd have a moratorium on all large-scale building right now, and I would go and I would rezone this entire city to what makes sense. So I'm just asking you, on behalf of Mr. Campbell, who did come to me, but on behalf of residents, that I know there's at least some of you sitting here that have heard it around the city enough, and I'm asking for your support in sending that message. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any other opponents?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Brian Vessey, 532 Revere Street. I grew up with Alan. When Alan calls me, it's a rarity for something like this. Our parents grew up together, I've been with Alan 53 years. And you know what? We've played there. It was a cottage community. Now we're talking about 18 units, and you know what? 47 at the Cove, top of Revere Street. My mother's 97 years old, ladies and gentlemen. How do I get apparatus for a house? We're well, way beyond our means here. We better take a setback, like Counselor Rizzo just said, and rethink what we're doing in this city. Because from 9:30 in the morning to 7:00 at night, I can't get home. I'm better off walking.
That's not the Board of Appeals, though. Are you opposed to this?
I am absolutely opposed.
You have to take, you know, I'm going to say something. They should be taking that up with the city council and letting the city council do a moratorium. You're here for the Board of Appeals, this, we cannot change the zoning. I want to make that perfectly clear. We cannot change the zoning. Your city councilors can, but we cannot. Are there any other opponents?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Craig Altamire. I reside at 47 Calumet Street and a direct abutter of this proposed project. Along with many things that I oppose, you know, being a director butter and a resident, things like noise ordinance, 18 units right next to me, you know, things like potential fire hazards of a building this size right next to me, the dumpster that would abut my property line that I would have to smell every day. You know, I'm a hard-working father of two young, young children. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a Boston Union ironworker. I'm well aware of the, the infrastructure, the, the structure of this building, the kind of footprint that this building would need to support. You know, one of the concerns I have is, is the building I live in is 140 years old, and, you know, you're putting up a four-story building of this size directly next to my building. So that worries me, you know, upsetting the, the natural water of, of the ground. The kind of impacts, like water, you know, you know, the water pressure for the neighborhood, you know, for 18 units, things like, you know, the gas lines, obviously the parking, the parking is a big one. Now, on Beechland Ave, on the corner of North Shore and Beechland, there is already an apartment building there. I want to say it's between 15 and 20. I'm not positive how many units are in there, but it's, it's a good size. It's, it's almost the size of this one. They don't have parking, so they park on Beechland, which is a one-way heading away from North Shore. Double-sided parking, it's, it's very tight. My street, Calumet Street, is a one-way onto North Shore, double-sided parking. Some residents are right across from this potential project. They don't have on-street, they don't have off-street parking. So that's a, that's a big thing. Now, I'm aware that there's parking provided, but we all know that, you know, that's not going to be enough parking for this building. The other thing that concerns me is, North Shore Road is already a very dangerous road to pull out of on Calumet Street. It's two blocks down from the set of lights at Revere Street. Cars speed every day. It's very, very dangerous, especially, you know, pulling out of there with my kids in the car. So you're talking about, there's two, two entrances, entrance and exits on each side of this building, both on Beechland and Calumet Street. Beechland, I'm assuming, is one-way onto Beechland, and then Calumet Street exits onto North Shore Road, which is, which is, you want to take into consideration all the traffic that's going to cause on an already very busy, dangerous main highway road. And the other thing is, during the building, you know, it's, it's, you got to look at, you look at delivery materials, you got to look at truckloads, employees, you know, where, where they're going to be during this project.
Okay, I don't mean to cut you short, but two minutes, though, if you want to just speed it up.
You want to consider a few things, the building, the, the materials, the, the deliveries, and, you know, certainly upsetting the, a really already quiet neighborhood, which I'm part of a, a neighborhood watch, and it's, it's still very nice. It's still a safe, good neighborhood. So there's a, there's quite a few things to consider here. I don't believe, this is, this is really going to do damage on this already quiet, congested little neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other opponents? Hearing, I'll close that side of the hearing. This isn't a debate. This is the, I don't allow it here. This is not the city council chambers, this is the Board of Appeals. If you can clarify a few items that were mentioned.
Yes. And, and this, this is my, one piece of this was my fault, completely skipped my mind in the few hearings I have going on tonight. One of the things that we had talked about as a group and talked about with Counselor Powers is having these streets deemed by the Traffic Commission to be resident parking only and to have our building excluded from that, so that any resident of this building can't park on Calumet, they can't park on Beechland, and, and my clients are fine with that. They are marketing these units of having one parking space each, and they are not having other cars here. They fully understand these concerns about, oh, what people are going to park in our street. Let's make it so nobody can. Nobody has a second car. If they're getting, if they're parking on your street, they'll get towed. And, and I think that's a, a good solution. In terms of this project, it, it, I would have to disagree. I think it's a good fit. I think that, versus, that mass junk building versus a 7-Eleven coming in there, some other business that really could have 24 hours a day use, people coming in, putting up a big neon sign. I think this building where people live there, they invest there, they buy homes, they're, they're going to be treating it like their neighborhood, too.
I'd like to make a motion that this be continued so that the developer and the ward counselor can meet again, because I am shocked at the amount of opposition here when over, almost 300 and something letters went out, and they didn't attend meetings. So perhaps it didn't go to the people, or it, they just didn't realize that this was being proposed. So I would ask the ward counselor to have a community meeting and put this up so that the people will realize that it started out as a residential building, and I thought that that's why it was changed to restricted to condos, and then it went down from a certain number to 18 units, so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At my request, we did have a residential meeting. It's my understanding, I didn't mail them personally, but it's my understanding that close to a couple of hundred letters went out, and I insisted that they go out to Bay Road, Seers Street, Satch, and Calumet, Beechland, every street in the area. At the meeting, there were one or two people, maybe three people that showed up, and Mr. Campbell was one of them. I didn't hear any strong objections at that meeting. They came back with a plan for five stories, one story for parking. I told them that I could not support this, even consider it, unless they knocked off one of the floors. It was my understanding, where there were four units on each floor, I'm sorry, five units on each floor, it would come down to 15 units. We would have five parking spaces for the owners and five parking spaces for visitors. It was also my understanding that the Traffic Commission would eliminate Beechland Avenue and Calumet Street from resident parking stickers for the residents of that building, which we can do. Two weeks ago, Mr. Campbell called me and told me he had a problem with the side yard being so close to his house. I'm glad you mentioned continuing this because I would like to see both the developer and Mr. Campbell get together, okay? A good point was brought up. We certainly, and that's zoned, probably, we certainly don't want a 7-Eleven or something coming in and out of there that's going to cause a possible accident. I, I would like to see it reduced to 15 units, 15 parking spaces for the, the owners and five for visitors. Now, that's going to be up to the two parties to get together.
So seeing that we have a long agenda.
Yeah, answer the board.
Okay. So it is a motion to continue. Row call.
Question comes on continuing this matter to April 25th. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is continued to the 25th of April.
Thank you very much.
And with the continuance that the butters would get notified of a public meeting with our, community meeting with the councilor. We don't do that, but I'm talking to you.
The next matter before the board is application A1808, the application of Lindron, 751 Revere Beach Parkway Revere, requesting a rear yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct a rear yard addition at 751 Revere Beach Parkway Revere.
Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Felsarano, 11 America Drive, Peabody.
I didn't get that. Okay, I'm sorry, he couldn't hear you. Could you just, so that he could?
Donald Felsarano, 11 America Drive, Peabody. I'm here on behalf of my client. We're, we're only trying to get a variance to extend the closet space to the existing footprint of the house. The setbacks of all the neighbors are basically all the same.
Okay. And the plans show that. But is there anything additional other than the plans?
We're putting an exterior staircase because the inside staircase is too tight to get furniture up to the second floor.
I'll conduct a public hearing here. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members, Mr. Speaker? You can press the microphone?
I'm sorry?
Could you press the microphone?
We're, we're just enclosing the existing porch, which has a roof on this, on the very top of the house, just the first floor only. That's it.
Okay. Any other one? Members, Mr. Speaker? Row call.
Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next application before the board is application A1809. This is a special permit application of Ann Stracha, 1 Leonard Road, Revere, requesting a special permit to further alter and expand a non-conforming two-family dwelling to enable the appellant to construct a second-story addition on Lot 22 at 1 Leonard Road, Revere.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ann Stracha. I live at 1 Leonard Road. I've resided in Revere for 50 years and at this particular address, 32 years. I, when I built my garage 10 years ago, I did put a flat roof on it, extending, hoping to put out a room because my apartment only has three rooms. I also had downstairs, which I didn't rent out for 10 years, but taxes going up, water going up, flood insurance going up, I was compelled to rent it out, and now I'm stuck with the three rooms, which is small, overcoming. Now, in, on the picture that I gave you, the picture that we took, you can see the house is like, cut off. It, it, it doesn't look beautifying the area, it just cuts it right off. Now, with the architect's work, he made it high enough, I just want the room to be eight foot high and I guess two feet high rafters for 2x12s to go in. It's not going to be as high as my original house because that has an attic, so it's just going to cut in lower, but it will make it look complete, it will make it look beautified, and not only beautified... And not only beautified, right now, it's a necessity. Right now, I've been taken ill and I do need someone to sleep over. And this room is gonna be living room, bedroom, it's got a wall-to-wall closet in it. And this way I can have my grandchildren, which are 31, 21, sleep over to help me out when I need the help. I just get out of the hospital not realizing that I do need the help now. I'm 80 years old and I'm too needed.
Thank you.
Now, I didn't have the annuity, but now it seems like with the, the real estate sword, uh, every bank in town is writing me that I have good credit. I come in and get, get some money, so I'm gonna go in for a home improvement loan if you'll grant me the permission to get this variance to build a room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any proponents? Any pro- ward counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've known Ann Stracher for almost three decades and, uh, she lives, uh, down there off of Bay Road. Uh, she has a very small house. She's at a stage now where she would like to have, uh, company over, her grandchildren, et cetera. And, uh, I, my own opinion, this is one of the cases where a variance should be granted to help somebody that's been a lifelong resident of this city and has a legitimate need for that variance. It is a hardship. And, uh, I hope that this board will support that and, uh, support Ms. Stracher and thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing non-holds close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-holds close that side of the hearing. Any members, Mr. Speak? Roll call.
Question before the board is granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Next application before the board is application A1810. This is the application of Janet Surin, 193 Suffolk Ave., Revere, requesting minimum side yard and height variances to enable the appellant to construct a second-story addition to convert a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on lot 23 at 193 Suffolk Ave., Revere. Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Devin Surian. I reside at 193 Suffolk Avenue in Revere. I'd like to touch upon, uh, the fact, uh, something that Councilor Rizzo mentioned earlier about coming before you gentlemen and speaking about a hardship. So I'm here, I'm joined with me by my fiance, my 90-year-old grandmother Rita and my mother Janet. We all currently reside at 193 Suffolk Avenue and by the photos in front of you, you can see it's not a large home. We have a legitimate hardship here. Myself, I'm employed as a Massachusetts State Trooper. My fiance is a registered nurse. I bring that up solely for the fact that we both work overnights. Right now, it is really not conducive to be taking care of a 90-year-old woman coming through the door at all hours of the night. We have a legitimate hardship. We don't have the space that we adequately need. My grandmother has resided in this house and my family, my mother, who's joining with me tonight, has grew up in that home. We have lived in this house for over 60 years. Myself, I've been a resident of this city for over 20 years. We wanna continue to live here and we wanna give ourselves an adequate space so that my fiance and I can have the hopes of raising a family here one day while also leaving my grandmother and my mother a place to reside as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing non-holds close that side of the hearing. Would you like to get up in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Rita Ducey, 178 Suffolk Ave., Revere. And I'm definitely for this. They already have spaces for their cars in the driveway. They're living, they're crowded, so it would only be a plus for them and better than neighborhood.
Thank you. That's proponent. Any opponents? Anyone opposed?
Hi, my name is Damian DiMarco. I am the owner of 202 Prospect Ave. and I'm a butter of the cloaks in the back. And although I'm not here to, uh, I'm, well, I'm a supporter of owner rights. I have a couple of concerns. First of all, I'm a little concerned that they're converting a one-family to a two-family. I understand this isn't the form for that. Um, I've had some bad luck with, uh, home conversions. On Prospect Avenue, uh, my neighbor across the street converted and left. My neighbor to the side converted and left and now we have a lot more people in, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, the cloaks have been wonderful neighbors behind me. Devin is a State Trooper, fantastic. His wife is a registered nurse, fantastic. Just concerned they're gonna convert the house, live for a couple of years and leave. There'll be another couple of families behind me. But, uh, I'm most concerned with the height variance. I think there's, uh, right now the roofs are all, uh, aligned and, uh, with a couple of feet higher, that's kind of like from your head to the top of the, uh, flags over there, could easily become five feet. And then there's a big giant back of the house that we need to watch. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents? Hearing non-holds close that side of the hearing. Any members, Mr. Speak? I did have the opportunity to go and tour this house. And, did you see the plans?
No.
Okay. There are a set of plans that were available downstairs. So they will have the, um, they're expanding the driveway so that they have the four spaces plus the garage. Um, cause that was my concern. And the height is not more than the house that's three doors down, cause I was questioning the height of it. So it is conforming to the street that's there now.
So I mean, if it's, the, uh, the roof level is exactly in line with the others?
With the house a few doors, you know there's one that's raised a few doors down.
I would have no problems.
Okay.
And I'm not here to deny the opportunity to work in the house. Just concerned about that.
And count, and for the record, the ward counselor did, um, call me and say that he has not gotten any opposition and that he was in favor. And it was the same thing, that the house, he drove up and down the street to make sure that other houses were that height. Okay, roll call.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted.
One more?
The next item before the board is application A1812. This is a special permit application of Mike Pham, 10 Pearview Ave., Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to extend and alter an existing non-conforming single-family structure by constructing a second-story addition on lot 5 at 10 Pearview Avenue.
Hi, my name is John Andrews. I'm the architectural designer. I'm in Swampscott, Massachusetts, 81 Burpee Road.
Do you wish to add anything or the plan speaks for itself?
Uh, the plans do, but I would like to add some things. What we have now is basically, uh, what we'd call a Cape-style home. There's a second floor there now and that houses two bedrooms and a staircase going up and a bathroom. What we would like to do is we would like to alter that and we would like to increase the size by about 300 square feet, still sitting within the same perimeter and just opening up and adding two bedrooms and two baths. Um, so as you can see right now, if you're looking at the picture, it's very chopped up and it, the actual, the whole square footage is under, under 1,000 square feet. So that's mainly what we'd be doing up above. And the, the height requirement is within the city's zoning. We need the special permit for the side setback in non-conforming lot.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll ask if there's any proponents. Anyone in favor? Hearing non-holds close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-holds close that side of the hearing. Any members, Mr. Speak? Please step, please press the microphone.
You do have adequate parking for two-family?
It, it's not a two-family, it's a single-family.
But you're adding to it to...
We're, we're just adding more living space to the single-family. Yeah, that's what we're doing. He has a growing family now.
It's not being converted.
It's not being converted at all. Nope.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Question before the board is granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted.
Thank you.
No further business. Having no further business, our next meeting will be April 25th at 4 o'clock.